Mr. Moonverance running a little late, so I mean, Council President Porterfield asked me to call the meeting to order, so I'd like to call finance to order. We have one item on this evening's agenda, and that is funding support for Belmont Pop Warner program. Mr. Farley, would you like to speak to that?
Certainly, so over the last few times together, Belmont Pop Warner program has came forth with the assets and institutional support to continue the good work that they're doing in the community. And we discussed it at length, two separate occasions. Last time we got to a point where there seemed to be some consensus in the room that we wanted to support Belmont. We were just waiting for some information to figure out exactly how much money was identified in the account. And hopefully, we'll get that information, and then we'll move this forward.
Okay, so who was going to get us that? Our finance commissioner was going to get that information for you?
Yes, did they mail receiving information from our finance commissioner around what was left on their account?
No.
I did read, I'm sorry.
I'll let the finance commissioner speak to that directly.
Did we back directly? Is that what you said? No, he said, let him speak to it directly.
I'm sorry, what's the question?
Well, so the question was, we were reading our information around the account that was identified, and to see what money was left in that account before we decided how we're going to move forward. That information, I mean, I gave the account myself and had some conversations, but I believe that the account has, no money has been spent down on the set of account besides, I think it's in the area of $8,000 that are earmarked for some students to come to work within City Hall. Is my understanding, is that your understanding as well, Mr. Mayor?
You hear in trouble here, you say three thousand, which county are we talking about?
Houston, Plano?
Yeah, so there was $108,000 that we took less for performance, so that's the account. Yeah, so.
So the other mention was, my understanding, what they last seen was that there would be, what we'd be here for was an accounting that is less over from the 150,000 for Houston Plano as well as 108.
150 is 99% committed. So are you thinking? Just not kids in high school, right? So you're PC's, so it's going to be a more of a.
Ms. Portman? So where are we? Does anyone have the information in terms of the funding available left at the number 8,000?
I think the finance commissioner.
I think it's fine.
Finance commissioner.
Is he coming? Are you pointing to him?
No, I was thinking maybe we should shut the door, but I mean, thought all these people were coming to come to us.
I'll look outside.
Yeah. So, we asked for information, Mayor, if there are, did you get any information? Because I've never been to the council. Did any of the council members get anything?
They're coming, they're coming into the meeting. It's like Damani's actually going down to his office. Excuse me, you can't, there's no public speaker. Mr. Farley, sorry.
Sure.
I was just asking.
Yeah, I went down, I didn't see our finance commissioner. However, like I said, based on that earlier of Ms. Carver, that there is, out of the $108,000 that we're talking about, there's only $8,000 that's been earmarked for kids to work here in City Hall. So, I mean, I'm comfortable moving forward with that information that I got and moving that to vote.
Well, I think that, has anybody spoken to Coco House to find out? The money was earmarked to Coco House and the programs that they run for.
It's not.
Right?
No.
The 108?
No.
Oh, was earmarked for the city, but Coco House was housing it.
When you're Coco House, and then we're going to use it for summer.
So now we're not using it for summer?
Well, so. Nobody is, and you're saying, they said it's 8,000.
I'm saying, out of the 108,000, 8,000 has been committed in earmark. We have roughly $100,000.
Ms. Portman? Another, some of it was allocated to work with what Mr. Masek is doing in the park. So there was some money that was allocated there. My understanding is that was about $1,000, then there was another $9,800 that's also allocated. So, other money, I think there was a budget that was submitted. However, there's no, you know, what I understand, that really getting done to higher level.
So.
Mr. Farley?
So, yeah, so it seems that there, so we wouldn't be, again, this is money that I talked about during the budget period. What I was saying, and I asked for the council, I said, the first money that we bring back from the ARPA should be going into our youth services line. This is, that part of money, and it's in complete alignment with our youth services, as you see here. So, I don't, I.
Well, I have to say that I still feel very strongly about, I feel like that we really need to be thinking about all of these things, not just one, not just signaling out one particularly. We got another request since our meeting last week from our youth hockey league. Also, now that they're feeling that the conversation has been opened, that they also are asking for money. My guess is if other leagues knew about that, they too would come forward. I myself would like to see us have a conversation with our parks director and consider funding, consider whether we want to fund youth sports as part of our 2026 budget. But, right now with this budget, I just feel like it's not really, to me, it's not fair to be signaling out one league in particular. Mr. Farley?
So, again, the way that you're framing that is a little problematic for me. We didn't single anyone out, and any youth program has the same opportunity to come forth and request support the way that Belmont did. So we're not single in the amount. They're not getting any special treatment or have any special access that any other youth program does not have in the city. What's concerning to me is that now it's being framed that way, almost in a way to almost pit programs against each other. And I don't want to do that. I'm actually, I'm not going to do that, I'm not going to be a part of that. But what I will say is, we have funded our youth service line adequately when I did everything but bet to do so in order to fund this line, so our kids in the community can get what they need. We wouldn't even be having this conversation. But being that we failed to act then, I can't accept that as an excuse to fail to act now. The money is there, Belmont has come forward with a request, we need to answer the request. And the thing is, we cannot say we support youth and youth programs, and then when someone does what any other youth program could do, then we say, well, I think everyone should have an opportunity. They did have an opportunity, and they do. And if you take, and if you, and if you follow what, or at least gave some serious consideration to what I brought up in the beginning, we wouldn't be having this conversation. And last time we were at this table, I believe that there was more, there was a expression of support for this legislation to go through, and now I'm concerned about where the hesitation is, I'm sorry.
Mr. Williams?
I would say, there's also a glaring difference between this and what the Hockey Association was looking at. I don't think anyone's had a chance to reach out to them, but it appears that it's a county resource. And then I perceive that, and I was trying to understand the increase in their ice time. So I didn't necessarily see that as a funding request, but can you help us ensure, what is the additional ask of what we normally expended for skating time due to not having a new college in transitioning from the Hawk Arena? I've had a conversation or two with Ms. Porterfield, where we designated use the ARPA funds to the arena with the specific understanding that there would be a lot of community partnership. So I think that is simply a conversation that we can have, but I saw those as two separate asks. And I will say, up to this point, we have not heard of the youth programs that you're highlighting, which I would also like to point out to Mr. Farley's point. We have this program in front of us. I am all for proceeding with their full ask. I think if we're going to transition to a conversation of what is your comfortability as the only other member in the finance committee? But I, I didn't want to take me in the talk of funds for anyone, but sincerely, the program speaks for itself. I think these kids deserve it, so.
See, I guess the difference is that, and I think that all of our teams have some measure of need, have some measure of a desire for support from us. Yes, this is the only one that has, except for hockey now, that has come forward this year. I think we've in the past had requests from youth soccer, which we have denied. I just feel that in the middle of our budget year is not the time for us to be having this conversation. Mr. Farley?
So we amend budgets and do, and make changes to what we initially scoped every time. Every, every year since I've been in the council, there's been some sort of amendment, if you will, to how we're spending money. So, in the thought of what future programs might come forward, if we go by that reasoning, then any programs that we did support, like with the money, over $300,000 to the fields for the Blues, and we would just say, well, let's wait to see who else comes forward. And then let's wait to see who else comes forward. Belmont's here, they've come forward, and it's, I mean, they, quite honestly, either we're going to do what we say and be who we say we are, or not.
Mr. Williams?
And I would say to respond, there were comments in the paper talking about the responsibility of the council. I think it would be irresponsible for us to not consider this request. And it is not frustrating to hear that because their problems don't align with how we review our budget, that we're not going to consider their needs. I think this very much speaks to a point that I've singularly made of making sure City Hall is meeting people at their doorsteps. Oftentimes, there's a connection between people understanding how the City Hall functions, and City Hall understanding how there may be some gaps to move forward, with addressing the needs of the community. So I think it is our responsibility as advocates for them, to hear them out as they come forward to us. And in these types of considerations, make those concessions. I think on an ongoing basis, yes, I can see the confidence of continuing to make these types of considerations mid-budgetary season. But to my point, or to my tenure on this council, it's the first time I've heard such a request. And sincerely, I think that there is a bona fide need to respond in kind.
So, and in terms of the ARPA funds, because that's, it seems like what's boiled down to, well, the other line has been spent that's in the budget, but the ARPA funds that were, we've left under the control of Coco House, but still for youth employment. And as it said, there's still money on that line that's not been expended. I think that's a place that we can look, and to make sure, because we have a deadline, we're facing that deadline very quickly. So, in my mind, using this money from that line, and as I said to Mr. Farley, I don't know if we'd be able to fund it entirely, but that is the consideration that's being asked, and that money is there, right there, right now. So, I'm not sure why we didn't get the notice from the finance commissioner that was asked of him, or that no one has, seems to have today. But, in having a conversation with Ms. Carver, the Director of Development, in terms of the ARPA funds, because she is in control of that, there is funding there that's not been actually allocated to anything out of that $108,000.
In your conversation with Ms. Carver?
Has been allocated, hasn't been.
Allocated to youth employment, yes. So, but no specific.
Hasn't been.
Right, for any specific code.
That is my question, though, because we have it allocated to youth employment and it's an ARPA fund, can we change the designation? What do we need to do to change the designation of an ARPA funding?
We have to do a resolution, but that, I mean, from what I'm hearing is that the council wishes to use that fund. And the understanding that it's grant funding and not a gift, and as such, Coco House would administer the grant as the recipient to the grant that we gave, we city gave them.
But the city still would have some, as we do with all grants, it still has something.
Also, yeah, we're, yes, we get the money from federal government. They look at us to make sure it's properly given to the district, and then our sub recipients, Coco House will be responsible for getting the grant numbers allocated, and also creating a proper audit trail for this amount of money. It is not a gift.
No, I think I understand it's not a gift, and that is grant funding. And the individuals who work, who run Pop Warner, would have to make sure that we have all the receipts and everything that's needed to do that. I think that's.
And I think it is a resolution, we have to indicate that.
Mr. Farley, hit you.
So, number one, I don't want to put any extra stipulation with this program that we wouldn't do it with any, with any other program. So, I think that we need to insist it in that way. The money is there, the money is available, the money will be going to a program that has survived, I believe since the 70s, is connected with no true institutional support, but a huge impact on our community. I'm struggling to see why we're not moving forward at this point, I really am.
I think, again, I know that you've mentioned that you don't want to pit sport against sport, but I think all of our teams have a huge impact on the youth that they're serving.
They do.
So, I think that's that argument, that argument I'm not really accepting. And then also, the fact, well, that statement. The other piece about the fact that we find, that we spent money on our fields, again, I'm going to reiterate that we own those fields. It's our responsibility as a city to be properly maintaining our parks and our fields. This is different, as would be any of the teams. I mean, we would be having to make a considerable change. I guess I'm just saying, I don't want to keep hearing about the fields and the money that we're spending on the fields, because they're City of Schenectady Fields. We own them. We don't own gone Pop Warner. So, I, again, I'm just going to discount that as well. Ms. Portman?
I don't know if we can completely discount that, because the way the fields were constructed, were specifically working with the Blue Jays that were in their home. So, those fields were created and done in such a way that was specific to that. The cricket fields are being specific to cricket, because that's what's played there. And I can also point out that, that many of the members of the Blue Jays are a traveling team. So there's a significant amount of players there that aren't actually Schenectady resident. Yet, we still did that, so I just want to make sure that that is part of the framing when we talk about the fields. I have no problem with that. I think that young people should have the ability and the opportunity to be able to play sports, to build character, does all those things that I don't need to continue to repeat. But I don't want to say that we didn't do something specific to the team, when in fact we did. And we did to their specifications, and that's not a problem. That's what they needed, they know what they need, because I don't play softball.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think you probably turn to the expert, just like we turn to experts when we are thinking about what we do with our roads and our streets. I mean, we don't have the knowledge to be able to figure that out. We have to have consultants, and the city engineer looks to the partners that he asked.
But then he's making decisions. What I'm trying to say, they had to think what it should look like.
Mr. Farley?
So, I think, again, you know, you talk about our, those fields of belonging to the city, and it's our, the word you use is responsible. I also believe, in fact, I know you could disagree, that it's our responsibility to provide opportunities and access to opportunities for our youth in the city. It's our responsibility to make sure that we are making the investments that align with the pictures we take and the things we say all the time. Now, here we have a situation where we're able to do that. We're able to meet the need of a program that came forward. When they came forward, they're asked, there was no other ask on the table. So for us to almost penalize them for stepping up and saying, hey, our kids in our community need some support here, to me, it's just, it's unfair, I just, I don't understand that.
Mr. Williams?
And I think all this needs to be taken into context, because just channeling myself and my own biases, when we had the discussion about the irrigation system with the golf course, I initially was opposed to it, not based on its need, but based on a lot of $3 million of the ARPA funding to that singular project. I can guarantee you, everyone in this room does not golf. That is not an assumption, that's me just putting it out. Now, I would say, at this standpoint, it's understanding how can we ensure that other considerations, and we look at it statistically, it is not close. But sincerely, have a look at the need and addressing the interest of everyone in our community. And we're not even talking about equal, we're talking about equity. And as of right now, this is the request.
Mr. Farley?
Not, we're not trying to put you on the spot here, but I heard from everybody except Mr. Messi, and I was trying to get your thoughts on this.
I appreciate you bringing it forward and hearing from everyone. I think this kind of brings a larger issue for us, is looking at my park and recs director, and looking at how do we make this as long-term plan? We have this ask now, and my opinion is, we have that money, it's not allocated, the 108. It's not coming, okay, so. Where is it? How is it allocated? Like, what, what's the projection for that?
A little over 108,000 to Coco House.
And Coco House has to administer?
Coco House, what?
To, to Belmont?
108,000 is allocated to Coco House. My understanding is that the request here is to take it from that. So, yes, it would be administered by Coco House.
Does Coco House have that capacity?
I can't see to that.
Ms. Portman?
Well, when we allocated, we knew that they had to have some of it, so that's because it was for youth employment, so that was going to have to be done. And in this case, excuse me, what I'm understanding and looking at the budget, some of it is purchasing materials, uniforms and that kind of thing, so that's like creating invoices. And again, the city of Parkland Development would make sure that they're doing it properly. So we all have the budget here. And they're all, they're not for the out-of-state things, they're not asking the additional 30, but it's uniforms, it's cheer uniforms, it's insurance and leave fees, so it's really just getting those invoices and making sure that they're paid based on budget that they've presented to us.
Madam Chairman? Members of the committee have chimed in on this and spoken to this. As of right now, it's one for, one against, the resolution failed. As of right now, there's a rule under the city council rules where if you get a cosponsor for a piece of legislation, if you get a cosponsor, you get two people, two council members, they can bring it to the next council meeting or subsequent council meeting. Also, the rules are that, yeah, it would require unanimous consent. In other words, for example, the resolution were to fail tonight, you could ask for a cosponsor. Then, that piece of legislation could be asked to be placed on, you know, unanimous consent, because it wasn't presented by the deadline last Thursday. So it's unanimous consent in order for you all to consider it. That doesn't mean that everybody, you know, if somebody could say, okay, let's just deal with this, and I don't want to vote for it, but let's do it tonight. Doesn't, it just means that it won't be on the consent agenda. In other words, somebody could say, I want to have a little poll vote on this item. In order to get a couple procedural things, one is, if it fails in committee, the sponsor, the cosponsor, doesn't need to be a member of the committee, you can get two council members to ask to be placed on the committee agenda tonight. And then, for you to consider it tonight, a meeting upstairs at 7 o'clock, it would require unanimous consent if that was pressed. So, what I'm saying is, at this point, you know, if it's going to fail, but if the members want to push the legislation forward for tonight, for at least get to the, ask for unanimous consent, to be placed on the agenda, then we have to draft a resolution, so that, I'm just for time purposes.
Mr. Farley?
So, I, thank you for that, Cooper Scott. I, I'm not sure that it would fail based on the previous conversations that have happened. I respect the fact that you're asking questions, we all need to make informed decisions. But again, this is money earmarked for support on youth. We have one of the longest-standing youth service agencies in the city of Schenectady with a strong demonstration of grassroots effort. They've been surviving and doing things, you know, existing in a space with zero to no institutional support. So now we're not, now we have an opportunity to make sure that we support them. So I, again, and I believe, and I don't want to speak for you, but I believe in our previous council meetings that this had your support. And I'm sure that in previous council meeting, you said it had your support as well, Mr. Messi. So, I'm trying to figure out now, I don't know if you're just asking questions, or are you saying that you're voting against us? I'm just trying to get what your position is, to be clear about that now.
Well, I mean, I really have put a lot of thought into this over the last week. And I really feel strongly that if we're going to include this type of activity in our budget, that we should be thinking about how we support all of our, and again, Chair of Belvedere Recreation, I think it's important for us to be thinking about, if we're going to do this at all with any of our teams, how do we, you know, do it so that we can support these recreations in general? The same way that we're supporting youth employment. So that's sort of my position and what I've been thinking about. I think in terms of, you know, really being stewards for the, for the money, and, you know, for our, for our city's finances, knowing, you know, what's going to be coming ahead, you know, I'm just, I just feel I'm not even sure, you know, where we should end up on any of this, in terms of how it compares to our infrastructure, how it compares to other things, other needs of the city. Knowing that, as you said, I think last week, you know, we had to increase our fees for trash collection. We, you know, had to increase our water fees, we had to increase our sewer fees. I think all of that's going to be worse in the next year's budget. What I'm coming to the table with after thinking about this for the last week is, should we be considering, and I know I'm stepping ahead here, but in our 2026 budget, how do we think about youth programs? And I also just want to say that, you know, Mr. Moonverance's meeting is still underway, so I'm not sure if he's going to make it tonight.
So, the money that we're talking about right now is here now. You're talking about in the future, and I understand that, but this money, sending this money would have no impact to our budget as it stands right now, as the money has already been allocated to support the program. So, so the things that you brought up, though, are very good points, but they're completely irrelevant to the issue that's on the table right now. So we are able to allocate this funding to this youth program right now as it stands, without it making any difference to the budget as it exists now. And you still have the time and the consideration to make moving forward about what it can look like for all. And you still have the time and the consideration to make moving forward about what it can look like for all new programs. So I'm starting to hear the different reasons as why not. And it almost feels like we're fighting to find reasons why we can't do it when it's, the money's here right now and it doesn't impact us of what our next year's budgets.
Mr. Williams.
But I submit to the council for your considerations, school move down path that provides some support for them to do it. It's an organization that's for fifty years got by with community support. And all of a sudden this year, saying there's no community support, and say that, but I'm just looking for the total amount to come from the city. So what you, we just talk, go through it.
Sorry, Mr. May, I apologize.
Let's look to see what they would be able to raise on their own and put something together to support that, to allow it to still to be a first-class organization that goes forward. Because a year from now, we give them everything that takes the fundraising mechanisms that they have been using. Creates a gap, people sometimes won't, you know, if you give them to an organization every year, you that just becomes part of the business plan for businesses, for other organizations. If you fund it and they don't have to ask for it, a year from now, I'll tell you, we're gonna be in a much more difficult budget process. Just, you know, the ARPA money here has roughly six million dollars. It's the hole we're starting off with. And then, so we then take some number, see what they can raise realistically, come back and take the number that fills the gap and allows them to maintain their program at a level that they have in the past.
Ms. Portefield.
Um, I understand that. I'd like to propose that we approach it differently, though, because we've done this with other organizations. I'd like to propose that we give a specific amount, I'll just say something you at least have. And then we've asked other organizations that we will allocate this, and then you have to have matching funds. So let's give a number so that say we will allocate this much, and then you have to have matching funds. And that we we do that tonight. And then say, in order to get this, you need to have matching funds. And then they have an opportunity to um already go out there and get it. They know that the city has made this investment and they can kind of use it to say the city has invested this amount of money. And would you now, we need, this is the number we need to get to, and are you willing to help us get there? So I would propose that we handle with that, that.
Ms. Patrick.
Yes.
And so I wouldn't disagree with everything that the mayor entirely said, but I would say in its in its framework, isn't that in essence what the community development block, and it does? An annual repeat funding to the same organizations year in and year out. And I would say, based on that concept, I would say if we are then holding this organization to that standard, then we replicate across our operations across the city for your various viewpoints.
So I can respond to that because for my career as a fundraiser, um I pretty much every year applied for a CDBG grant. And they're very competitive and you don't always get them. The same organizations don't get them. There's a whole selection process. Anybody can apply for it. Well, I mean, I shouldn't say that. Um, you have to be above the C three, you have to fit within the parameters of the CDBG grant program. But the same organizations are not funded every single year. And also, people have to keep in mind that it's a competitive grant program. It's not automatically awarded. Probably, I probably got rejected many more times than I got funding from CDBG um at my various workplaces whenever I applied. So I just want to, you know, make sure people are well aware of that.
Yeah, um, so let me, I wanted to add a level of clarity. There are some organizations who consistently over the years, and the records will show that they've always, there may be some organizations that maybe they were new, maybe whatever number of reasons. But to Mr. Williams' point, there have been, there has been a level of consistency, actually it's coming to question, that we're consistently funding those things, like if we always give them, they're never gonna have them. So there had
That's right.
of consistency when we funded the same organizations over and over again.
I, I get what you're saying.
And so, um, I agree with Mr. Williams that that maybe next year, I'll learn should look at CDBG funds, but right now we're looking at the ARPA funds which have a deadline, they don't have an expiration date. And again, we could, if we can't do the entire thing, we could come to this level of compromise where we're saying this is what we can do and then then ask for matching funds.
Did you have your hand up?
The mayor did.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Generally agree with everything everybody's saying, but should also be cognizant of some of the changes in Washington. If anybody at this table can predict what's gonna happen, you shouldn't be at this table, you should be on the national news service guiding the country. But if council president's outlined, if you want to pick a number of fifty percent or twenty thousand or twenty-two thousand, don't to that level, make it work.
Mr. Farley, Mr. Williams, and I keep thinking you have your arm, your hand up, but I guess you don't. You do? Okay.
No, I'm just, my, do we, I'm still stuck on the the the, i- is it possible some of that can be numbered and allocated? But do we know if if there's been any problematic advantage has?
There are some restrictions on stuff, and some of it's to go through what the actual expenditures they're looking to do. Sometimes, look at the let's send me a list today, there are sometimes like uniforms or helmets or things that they might buy. I haven't looked into this, but there may be some things where the city has opportunities through state contracts that we could buy those cheaper. So we wouldn't give them money, just buy helmets and give it to them. And so there would be a little bit more negotiation to trying to manage the best value for the outcome of the things that they're attempting to achieve.
Yes, I'm so, I'm sorry. Oh, are you said, um, Mr. Farley?
So Belmont's not asking us to um fully fund them. That's not, that's not what they request. Um, they request what they're, they requested amount would get them through the season. And they would still have to fundraise and do the hard work that they've been doing, I don't know, for the last fifty years. Sure, that's not gonna change um in order to get them through like the postseason if they get to the Super Bowl, which they have, I think it was like three of the last five years, I'm not sure about that, but I know. And how I know is because every time they made the Super Bowl, we bring them down here and we smile and cheer for them and take pictures with them again. So what I'm saying is that right now uh the ask would uh help them through through the season until they uh win uh the, and get enough wins and go on to the postseason, which I have confidence that uh they'll be able to do that. But um it's not asking, again, they hadn't come to us with a request prior to this because they've been working so extremely hard to provide these young men and women in our community to protect the factors that they um that they supply. You know, I was just on at uh the YMCA over the weekend where the lieutenant governor was speaking. He's a Belmont alumni, uh the executive director is also a Belmont alumni. And it got me to thinking about all of the people that have uh raised this community that has gone on to do some pretty substantial things and, you know, Belmont's part of that pedigree. So outside of the fifty-year track record, which I don't, you know, I I think speaks for itself. I think supporting them, that money will be in good hands and put to good use. I think they are improving that with their actions more so than what uh what we're talking about in that.
Ms. Portefield on it, Mr. Williams.
I just wanted to bring a time to attention to that we have a seven o'clock meeting. So when I have a resolution to this meeting, you have probably about fifteen more minutes.
Thank you.
To make that happen.
Thank you. Mr. Williams.
Uh, so sincerely, I was here writing to fully meet. The uh requested amount for their regular season seems as though that is not something they were willing to consider. Um, sport if you're put out fifty percent, is there a number that you are us pa- uh us having a motion on that allows for there to be additional funds in the intent that year from other programs? And I say that in a caution of I still want to have this conversation if we hear from no other program because I still heartfully feel that we should fully meet their ask.
I would be happy to, um, I would be willing to uh look at a different number. I do, you know, I think that you all know that I, since we have so many people here who don't know me, they probably know, I think they know you. I just need to say that, I really have to say that, yes, we have photo opportunities uh when we bring people here, but I find it insulting that you're acting like that's the only reason that we do it. And I need people that don't know me to know that, uh and I'm speaking personally here, not necessarily my city council hat on, but I do do a lot of work in this community for youth and for other folks in this community. So I just have to honestly say that it does, it is somewhat insulting for you to say that we do things just for photo opportunities.
I didn't say it. Okay, excuse, don't.
So, so I just, I just really needed, you know, that I I tend to be, let's all get along.
Can we just redirect the conversation, please, um to the finding?
I needed to confirm.
But I, but I have said this, and he said it to everybody in the council, so everybody could about that way, but, you know.
Well, I think I was the person that did do the resolution for the Belmont children.
Well, they went.
So I was taking it a little personally.
Let's redirect the conversation, please, to whether or not funding that we're gonna have, we are time limited. So we have to do that. And so, Mr., um, I'm sorry, it's your, it's your committee, Mr. O'Brien has his hand up.
I would just say, if you want to inform that you have one of the members that, Mr. Williams is the member, wishes to make a motion for an amount. We'll authorize Coco House to disperse previously allocated ARPA funds up to a figure. I don't know what that number is. Belmont Pop Warner Football Program upon the presentation of documented budget request for uniforms, equipment, transportation, participant registration fees by the Belmont Pop Warner Football Program to the Coco House. That's dealing with, it's just put the number in, I think that's encapsulating everything also that's grant money. We have to be, make sure there's a paper on the trail. So it's subs and substance. That's what I'm hearing is a motion. It's a, it's a, it's a figure, a number that we need to put in there.
Ms. Williams.
The question is, what do you feel comfortable with? My number would be forty-seven thousand.
Oh, yeah.
Hence, what number, figure?
I think that we were, I think, was it Ms. Portefield or the mayor, um, were suggesting a compromise perhaps of half the amount? Did you just say that?
I, I did say fifty percent, but I rounded it up to twenty-five thousand in my head.
So is that a number that you'd be comfortable with?
Mr. Farley.
I want to be clear that I definitely like to see um that funded and filled. Also, part of our job here is to make concessions and and work with each other to do what we think is best um for the community. And if that's a number that you would, uh that you're comfortable with, um, then I would support that if we couldn't that out. So with this whole conversation in mind, I would like to make a motion that we, everything you just said.
What you said, that to put a little flexibility in there because there's still accounts where maybe a nickel and dime, a thousand bucks, five hundred bucks.
So just to be, just to be.
A lot of heart will get mad at you for that.
But just to be clear, are we saying twenty-five thousand here, but there's other accounts out of the places that you could get money from?
If you're taking it so, I had sent the message to Will Eames, who said, nobody's talked to him. So Mark had that conversation with him. We're taking a whole amount of money from him, he might not be, not be happy with it. So if I nickel and dime other accounts to minimize that, and I'm not saying this money sitting around huge amounts, but just a little flexibility in that.
Well, it'd be up to, so in other words, up to, so in other words, if there's other funding sources, it'll be flexi- flexibility from other funding sources up to. So there's, there's a firm figure, but it's up to here. So as the mayor just indicated, there could be other sources for that, so.
Well, it's just, so was there a plan still for Coco House to be using the money?
Don't know.
Oh, okay. I misunderstood what you were saying.
So, I'll speak to that. So if we can say summer employment, it is June none. And so I would thought by now we would be hearing what that is going to look like. It's my knowledge, we have not heard that. And so, uh, I, first of all, it's, it's, it's actually city money, we just asked Coco House to administer it. So it is city money. Uh, so I don't, um, I want to make sure that we are doing our due diligence and spending the money first and foremost. And we're doing it, we, I know they said youth employment, but we see the level of flexibility. We're, we're still making sure that we are supporting young people in our community. And in terms of the amount, I say up to twenty-five thousand. And that's not taking the whole forty-seven, that was the ask um from, from this organization um doing the summer youth program and it's still an opportunity to do the summer youth program in addition to that, and perhaps that that particular program has used summer youth from the county as well. So we could look at all of the different ways to make sure they're still supporting their summer youth's employment with some of this funding as well as the funding that um the employees, the young people that they're getting employed through the county.
Mr. Farley.
So this money that uh that we're talking about um is part of the money from the legislation that I brought forth um to to fund, to make sure that uh the Coco House uh that the funding and support that they needed. Um, so the last thing that we'll do is allow us to turn into something that we're taking from one organization's ability to serve you. The money that was, came back into the city um from the Coco House was money that they were unable to spend um within the required deadline. So I advocated for that money to still serve the same purpose, the ultimate purpose, which would be serving the youth of said community. So I think that's a really important distinction to make, and it's something that should, that uh I just want to make sure that we put on record. We're not taking from this organization um with their capacity uh to serve the youth. Um, I, I see this at very uh close alignment. And again, moving forward, I would just think that we would um talk about funding our youth service budget line. I asked for it to be up to three hundred thousand this year. It was only a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And maybe this will be a good point of reflection for us moving forward to make sure that we don't have to make those type of distinctions.
Ms. Williams.
And it's my closing comment, because I do believe that there is a motion on the table. I would say, the youth of the community are benefiting, who should it truly matter where that money comes from? We're all destined to be here to improve, at least in this setting, uh the quality of living and living conditions for them. Uh, we're able to do that through any means or mechanism that is within our purview. I feel personally responsible to do that, but sincerely, I believe there is emotions.
Yes, I'll end the role resolution, I have a reading the resolution to the council here, so once it gets printed up. Says, whereas the city council has reviewed the financial needs of the successful youth recreational activities of the Belmont Pop Warner football program, and whereas the city council finds that a grant allocating funds to the grant, to the Belmont Pop Warner Football Program to assist with the cost of uniforms, equipment, transportation, registration fees, in keeping with the public purposes and the legislative intent of the twenty-twenty-five operating budget for allocation for youth and recreational activities, and now therefore being resolved, the city council does hereby authorize Coco House to disperse previously allocated federal ARPA grant funding up to twenty-five thousand dollars to the Belmont Pop Warner Football Program upon the presentation of documented budget request for uniforms, equipment, transportation, and participant registration fees by the Belmont Pop Warner Football Program to Coco House. Is everybody okay with that language?
Ms. Williams. Sorry that you're raising your hand. You, do you raising your hand?
Okay.
The motion needs to second.
Oh, second.
In favor?
Sorry, I'm, I'm not usually in the role as chair of this committee, but um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam President, just to save time, this means because we have to draft this, does the council have unanimous consent to put this piece of legislation on the can, agenda tonight?
Well, we have a one for unanimous consent, but we didn't know if it's gonna happen, but we were prepared, right? It's on there for unanimous consent and uh the, we don't have, are you gonna give the type that?
Yes, I would, I'd have to, you have to go type that up.
Okay, but it is on the, we think it's on the agenda in anticipation that it would happen. And if, when things don't move forward on the agenda, we can obviously remove it, but thankfully, we won't have to do that tonight.
Okay, thank you.
So I asked for a motion to, is there anything else that needs to come before the finance committee? Okay, um, can I ask for a motion? Second, all in favor?
Thank you. We have nine minutes. We have nine minutes.